You guys are live, so.
Thank you. It's a lot.
Mister, Mister Mitchell's with his daughter at first communion tonight, so.
I just shared with all of you guys the presentation that these ladies put together first night. It means the things updating, so you guys will all start it. Perfect. You guys can be at this way.
Yeah, I guess I should be.
And a lot of work to get to.
It would be a base not to be able to.
We don't have to do any math.
We're gonna get started.
You're done, you're live.
All right, hello, I'd like to welcome everybody to the January eleventh, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Atlantic Community School of the Fourth Ward. If I could have a roll call.
Fine.
Yes.
Fine, yes. Claire.
Yep.
Helen, yes, yes, thank you so much.
Um, can I have an approval of the agenda? It looks like we have one added fundraiser, uh, which was a change, and other than that, the rest is the same.
There's a couple of open roll. I'm going to per the agenda as amended.
One second. Helen, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Claire.
Yes.
Williams, yes.
Uh, at this point, we always like to welcome visitors who have an opportunity to public comment, so no one's here right now, I don't think. Um, we're always open to hearing from our constituents. And we'll move on to our special presentation, which is on implementing our new math curriculum called Bridges.
Okay, so I'm supposed to guess that you guys have the presentation. I share, thank you. Okay. This is Michaela Person, she's new to our district, this year, we're really lucky to be able to steal her from the Des Moines area. Missy Gergen is our instructional coach, and then Fay Drier teaches second grade. Uh, so I asked them to come and talk to you a little bit about our new math curriculum, and so they put a little stuff together. And they'll let them take it away from here, so prepare to work. Okay, so first we have the philosophy behind Bridges Math, and it says that Bridges focuses on developing students' deep understanding of mathematical concepts, proficiency with key skills, and the ability to solve complex and novel problems. Their curriculum is anchored in inquiry-based approach to math education for pre-paved with fifth grade. Um, we have a video on there that you can obviously watch at your all time later, but when they show you what Bridges looks like in a classroom, it's a change of what we grew up with, where you're thinking. It's not just like, here's an algorithm, this is how you do it, do it this way, you'll get the right answer, and that's it. Um, it's a lot of manipulative, hands-on, reinforcing skills with games, patterns, um, teaching kids math and constant learning the concept of math, not just, I do it this way because my teacher told me to. So, um, the kids are constantly using materials, um, having conversations, and it creates an environment where they feel like it's okay to be wrong, because I can try something different. So that's kind of a little bit of a, a summary of what that video talks about and shows you of teachers that have gone through adoption of Bridges, comparing it to what they've done kind of like in the past, and they're um, different.
Uh, so we spoke to a few teachers at Washington just to get their thoughts about Bridges. Um, and some of the comments that were made here were, uh, we're seeing a lot more number sense in students than in previous years in other math curriculums. Um, Bridges is creating more mathematical thinkers, uh, it's engaging and interactive, uh, provides a lot of data with pre-tests, post-tests, and checkpoints throughout it. Um, a lot of resources are available online as well as hands-on. Um, it's student-driven, aligns with the standards. It aligns with iExcel, which is an online learning curriculum, um, that supplements Bridges as well. Um, Bridges values feedback, um, about their product, so they're easily available, and uh, um, we can talk to them about, you know, things that need to be changed. The manipulatives that are available for students to use are very engaging. Um, students are always excited to try to figure out the patterns of the number corner calendar each day. It makes the kids think about how they got their answer, instead of just knowing or memorizing, they're beginning to understand conceptually. And the kids really enjoy doing workplaces and are engaged during this time. Um, and most workplaces are available digitally as well as hands-on. So, just a few ideas of how we're doing at, uh, Washington, so.
Could, could you or someone explain, what do you mean, um, for kids this age that they have better number sense?
So that would be like when you're trying to get a kid to understand why they're doing something, for example, like the number thirteen. If you look at the number thirteen, you think, oh, it's a one and a three, but it's not a one and a three, it's a ten and a three. So their understanding and like in the, the little, the little kids in the younger grades might be building on a face ten blocks or looking at manipulative visuals or a ten frame or something that shows them, that's not just a thirteen, but it's a ten and a three put together. So they're really understanding how those numbers work to build place value, so that when they get up into the skills of adding and subtracting three-digit numbers, they don't just know, I've crossed this off, and I put no one up there. They know, oh, that was a twenty, and I took a ten away, so there's a ten left, not just a one, right, like floating up there, so.
Right, so the, the standard algorithm that was used prior to that, you know, adding, putting the one over the tens place, like you had stated, you know, what does that really mean when you put the one in the tens place? What is that concept, but really the understanding of that? So taking a number and like splitting it, um, or take twenty-six plus, you know, thirty-eight, splitting that twenty-five into its tens and ones, same thing with thirty-eight, splitting it into its tens and ones, grabbing the tens together, grabbing the ones together, and then forming it together. What are some different strategies you could use to solve that instead of the basic law, uh, algorithm?
It's not a lie, I've taught, this is my eighth-year teaching bridge and teaching it, I've taught second grade most of the time, but I learned math this way, and I thought, well, I wish I would, I'm so much better than mental math now, as an adult than I was, because I just did it because I was told to do it. I didn't understand why, and it really does create, like, kids can start to do things in their head that you would have thought, like, if you just teach them one way to do it, they would have never come to that, so it really does hit different, oh, more wide variety of learners, for sure. Not everybody gets it the traditional way, and some do, and Bridges is meant to build up so that they have that strong foundation when they get older, that they're like, oh, yeah, I know I'm doing this stuff, makes sense, so.
We got, we were so lucky to have grabbed, she came in and she's taught this before, and she's kind of been someone I go to all the time. I mean, or actually, our whole staff does, because she's kind of the expert in her building, or thanks for sharing, you're the expert, but it's been nice because she keeps telling them, cut the process, it's gonna be all right, you're gonna love it eventually, because it is a change. I mean, we had taxes for so many years, and then we switch it up to totally different thinking for teachers, um, and for kiddos. So it's been great having her still.
Um, what it, okay, so the kiddos really enjoy doing workplaces.
Oh, that, we're getting.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, okay, so the workplaces are like games, but they're actually learning. So I brought, um, actually went down and I asked a couple of third-grade teachers, and we actually have the kids, and this is the one that they liked the best right now in third grade, and they have different ones all the time, so they're constantly um, introducing new workplaces based on whatever they've taught in the classroom, so, um, actually, the third grader taught me how to do this today. This one is called, um, Tic-Tac Talk, I'm gonna show it to you, and it's really based on, it came from after they taught, had been working on time on a lesson, but it not just, doesn't just work on time, and you'll see when I kind of show it to you guys, it works on time, it works on adding, it works on multiplying, it works on odd numbers, even numbers, multiples, so it's a variety of things, but they're playing this game, so they're learning and practicing while they're playing a game, which how much more fun is that than doing a worksheet or, you know, something else, so, um, and it's nice, because all of them have like a little explanation sheet, tells you the materials you need, how to play the game, and then everything inside these packets, so the teachers have had to do a lot of work to get these all prepared and stuff, but then they have them ready to go, and, and the kids really, I think this is what they enjoy the most, so do you guys have to say that in the classroom?
Yeah.
So, so I'm gonna hand this out, do you want to talk about your course?
Yeah, I just have an example of a first-grade game, and this one's called Domino Addict Compare, so any workplace station, they've got something to play with, to have out, and to use the different math tools, um, so this one, they're working on super tidying, counting, adding, and comparing numbers, they're turning dominos over, they're adding the numbers, they're comparing them to their partners, or writing equations to match it, and then using greater than, less than, or equal symbols, so there's a whole bunch of things going on there that help in the, the first grade standards, and like Missy said, they're, they're having fun, so engaged, enjoying themselves, and learning that, so around, so you guys can kind of take a look at them, and you want to play them, you sure can.
I don't like math. I have a computer.
As those are going around, do you guys have any other questions for us, or?
So the older grades, they have bridges too, right?
Yep, up to fifth grade, yes.
Yep.
Yep.
Oh, I thought even beyond that, six through, six through twelve as envisioned, envisioned.
Bridges is only K five.
Do those work together?
Yeah, do they work together?
They're all aligned to the, to the work.
But they did.
They're, they're both aligned.
There's similar, similar pedagogy surrounding certain concepts that we're talking about, uh, that math is not, but as, as you get further in there, you know, when you get in your algebra and things like that, you're probably get, get more, hopefully, the kids by that time have the efficiencies down as to how to, how to solve some of these, uh, that have no relations that they're developing in, in the lower grades.
Is, this is cool, is this something that like a parent can download online and like work with your kiddos during the summer or something like that? Like, any of the?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Your type of likes to.
Yeah, to do that, I, but there are some home connection, um, games, so.
Okay.
Every maybe five, five to ten lessons, then we have a send home.
Okay.
Game that's, oh, and gives directions to parents on how to play that at home with.
Okay.
To reinforce the skills from rest.
Just, because I was a mom and Mike intended me that they had to do a math and a reading lesson every day during the summer. They kept the, they could do those.
Right.
So in the past, um, the math teachers, there was less use of manipulatives and games and stuff, is what I'm hearing you guys say. And that's what this, because, you know, that use of manipulatives and games has been around for a long time. So, but what this does is it sort of gives them all the materials and guidelines about how to use it and integrate it with the lesson. Is that, but I'd be fair to say.
And I feel, and I feel like this program too is more like multiple strategy-based, like not telling them exactly, this is the way, this is one way to do it. It's coming up with lots of different ways to do it, being more structured.
And everybody, every kid's different, so for them to be able to choose which one works best for them, I think that gives them that, that ability to do that, too. So it's not just one strategy, not one sort of strategy for every kid works the same, you know, someone might like this one.
It does sound harder for the teachers, though.
It did, well, it's fun. The first, let's talk about it. The first year is a lot of work, the first year you have a lot of prep, but it's a lot of prep and laminating and saving. So I would say the first year I piloted, like December, I started, it's like I'm getting in the group, and the next year you go, and if you file your stuff by lessons, like, okay, I've only got to make a couple copies or cut a couple things, and it's so much easier, and first year's definitely more overwhelming, but it's, it's easy to save it all, and that's the intent is to have it already the next year, and it's not, sure, not overwhelming after that, that much, so.
All right, well, thank you guys so much, appreciate you coming in.
Thank you. I'll get myself. Take your time, I'll just pick one.
Um, oh, Stacy, I was gonna say, if you want to stay up there, we're moving on principal reports.
That was it.
That was it? I like that you bring backup singers. Whoever wants to next.
Oh, I have news, sorry. I just want to say Lisa Groban's, um, resident engineer, so I wanted to say thank you for all for your service and yeah, and what she's done for the kids in Atlanta, so. Um, getting late for you.
I'm just gonna go quick, I was, I think of what I should talk about tonight, and we had great conferences with teachers over there, I PDPs, uh, on January second, I think we all had great conferences. Um, we got testing coming up next week with different things, but I just want to highlight, uh, and talk about character and culture and things like that. We got this one neat kid who, uh, who's just, and we, we, we talked about character and ability and all those things that we're doing, and uh, early on this year, she just asked, you know, after lunch, hey, can I help scrub the table and clean it all? Sure, and then, you know, a couple other kids joined on, started helping. And then I bring down what's on Friday, so like on Friday, you'll see like four fifth graders help, because they're like, hey, I can go get it done, you know? Uh, but she has continued to just do it over and over and over, and some kids fall in and fall out, she's just very sweet girl, very nice girl, and just wants to be there and help, help out. Um, I, I mean, by now, she's kind of got a nice relationship with the custodians, so they're helping out, you know, and just having a good time and everything, but you know, every time I'm upstairs in the lunchroom after, after fifth grade lunch, they're helping, and I think that's a really neat thing, and not to say that our kids, you know, that's, that's all character and every kid needs to do that, but you know, I was, I was thinking, I was like, I need to point out some of those kids that do those really good things, and very simple, it's not, you know, more than five, ten minutes most days, but just she's, she's hung on and done a really good job, and I just want to make sure that when those kids kind of get, get highlighted and and we talk about those different things, because you hear, maybe not the great things, but you, you don't always hear that, that one kid that's just stepped, kept up and done those, those really just a little above and beyond that. So I, it's been a really neat thing, and like I said, the custodians, you know, love having her help out, and, and she does a great job, and, and every once in a while, other people stay with her and, and don't, but, um, I, I mean, it's, it's kind of she's kind of pulled people in at different times, and it's just kind of neat to see, like, she's in, she's not a very outspoken person, she's nice, quiet, oh, she's helping me, I'm, can I help too, type of thing, and, and so it's, it's just some of those underseen people for what they do, and so I just want to make sure I highlight, um, just one of the kids that are doing good things. Yeah, so, yeah, any question? Sorry, that's super simple.
Well, I mean, since you bring it up, that sounds like sort of an orange frog positive behavior and trying to sort of spread, um, encouragement and good vibes around, and, um, I was just wondering if there's other stuff that's going on at Schuler that's, like, how are you seeing the orange frog stuff now that we've finished the first semester and moving on, is there much going on with?
I think there's a lot of different things, one other thing that we, we, you know, we hand out character awards at the end of the month. Um, and so one other thing that we were doing this year is, uh, we have just tickets that I've handed to all staff, and there's a bunch in the back, in the, in the lounge, and I just pick up a couple if they give one, but it's, it's more to kind of follow. Because, you know, at the end of the month, we give out two character awards for each classroom, three, now I got myself stumped, three character awards for each classroom, but you don't get to hand one out to every kid. Uh, and sometimes, you know, those kids may get overlooked, because they might not be like the best respectable kid all month, but at certain times, they're doing exactly what they should be doing, and they're often like the kid I just talked about, so uh, all staff can just hand them a, a ticket and be like, hey, go down to the office thing, you know? We've talked about, make sure you tell why, why'd you get a ticket, you know, like this, this girl today, I gave a ticket, said, hey, you know, thanks for being awesome, thanks for cleaning up the tables and just going out of your way. Uh, our mission this week is to, is our month, our monthly thing is respect, character trait is respect this month, so this week, it's respecting your school, so cleaning up after and doing all those things, so kind of the thought behind the tickets is, if you see somebody following up looking for the week or respect for the month, hand them a ticket and say thanks, and tell them why they did it, you know, why you got the ticket, and um, you know, it's one of those things where we don't hand out ten tickets a day, because we're not trying to hand out ten tickets a day, we're trying to hand out, you know, three or four or five a week that are really meaningful, and then those kids, you know, have that, if that makes any sense, so, uh, they're, they're not, I mean, it's not a view, it's just, it's a nice thing where some of the kids get something, so I think that's one of the, the nice things, and, and I think the neat part about it too is, you know, like, the teachers are really in charge of giving that character award. Well, this is everybody, so the pairs are, hey, this kid did something awesome, and, and they get to recognize some of those kids that maybe aren't awesome in the classroom sometimes, or all the time, but are doing some really good things.
Great.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
Names, yeah.
On your report, academic excellence, you have, we've met with the school improvement person from AEA.
Yeah.
And so that elaborate, uh, is that because we need to get our scores?
So we were targeted, uh, middle school and truly were targeted for our scores, uh, on IAS test, so we met with the school improvement person, uh, we're gonna go through some different trainings this spring, uh, go through like they just Sammy report, and you kind of go through how you're doing things in the building, and then just kind of reflect on that and see what we can do that maybe can help support our scores and and, and work on some of those things, excuse me, so, so this person's been helpful with AEA, you know, I think we yeah, I mean, the person's been helpful, she's talked to us a couple different times, and I think we have good support. And it's, you know, whether you're targeted or not targeted, it's probably a good thing to do every once in a while to review what you're doing and see what you can do that might be a little bit better than what you're doing right now, or, but it's, it's more of a reflection, I don't know. Looking for that improvement piece, so. Thank you.
So, I kind of thought it through, a couple things based on what you guys had asked. So one of the things, um, at the end of the first semester, one of my sophomores reached out to me, and she and her youth group had been talking about a project. They wanted to do something that would help fellow students, and not just the high school, but other buildings as well, and so they came up with this thing called the Mitten Project, where they collected donations of gloves, scarves, hats, coats, heavier jackets, et cetera, uh, and they deliver, I'm not sure which building it went to, they delivered a couple bags to, I want to say Washington, okay, to Washington, but at the high school, too, also brought two huge, like like bigger than like a garbage, black, those black garbage bags full of stuff, and I don't, I just, that was a kid's idea, they saw, you know, it's from a movie, C and E, villainy, I think it's from the robots. And they saw this with their friend, they keep seeing people, they don't have a code, they don't have, and so they wanted to help out. And normally, it is always just at the elementary buildings, but to have such a great donation generated by kids for other kids, I just thought it was really powerful. And so it just was a wonderful reminder of, we've got amazing, we've got amazing people in our district, we just really, really do, yeah. So that's one thing I wanted to talk to you about. Uh, another thing that is happening primarily with a lot of our juniors right now is they are, um, working on an extension of the career units, so looking at resumes, cover letters, then they will take it to, um, scholarship application as days. Um, a lot of colleges used to have them as part of their application process, not as many do anymore, so turning it to scholarships, because as you're entering that second semester of junior or senior year, um, those are things that really you got to start thinking about. So excited to see the work and the questions that are getting asked there. And then today, so once a month for our building PD, we have, um, Val Gigerich from the AEA com, and, uh, today she was joined by Cheryl Loughlin, our school improvement consultant. And we're working on, um, trauma-informed strategies and restorative practices. Right now, we're really on the trauma-informed strategies within the classroom. Teachers last year asked for, we know what trauma is, we know how it affects, uh, persons being, their mind, et cetera, but what are strategies we can actually use in our classrooms to do that? And, um, today were some very, like, very simple things that could be done, and so I'm anxious to see how many teachers then take what they learned today for connections, and then start implementing some of those things in their classrooms.
Yeah, do you have some way that you sort of follow up after some sort of PD thing like that comes and everybody agrees, yeah, that's.
The one thing that's so great, I think about, is it's, it's not just a one and done. We're continuing, like, what we did today is built on for our next session a month from now, so then we, we reflect back on, okay, so how did that work, et cetera? Um, and it kind of reminded me of, we are, uh, asset team met with Cheryl Loughlin, and she shared a video with us that was something about people's values, and instead of in the classroom saying your expectations or our rules, you know, this is what we determined we valued as a class, and this is how we defined it. So just kind of pointing it back to, instead of it being a rule or an expectation, but it being a value, and it's interesting to see just how that, I mean, we've only been in second semester, what? A week, I don't know, not very long, just starting to see how some of that shift is taking place, so, uh, you know, it'll be very easy for me to just have some of those simple conversations with teachers and ask, how many of you guys did the circle activity in your classes, how have you implemented that in? And the other thing, too, my table group, we were talking about, um, really starting to watch people's hands, because the human body, a lot of your emotions, you get signals from your hands. And, uh, what Val said to us today, she's like, think about our students, they're, how often are their hands actually open? They're probably holding on to something, they're writing something, they're typing something, so really trying to look for some opportunities to provide that for students, so like, I'm watching hands. It's that, there's so much science to it that, yeah, normally I'd be like, watch the hands for other things, so, like that.
Yeah. For sure.
Sure, it used to be their hands were just had phones all the time. Yes, and that, well, and then she did say that, she said, I mean, their hands are constantly like in a closed-off motion. So we've got to give them opportunity to be open. That's true for all of us, amen, yep.
Oh, thank you.
Yep.
Uh, superintendent report.
Should we take a look at, uh, academic excellence, there's one kind of point for things out, uh, it's northward, alluded to the, the mid-year conversations, uh, with, with individual teachers and their plans, uh, around their specific instructional framework indicator, based on the feedback, that teacher to become more comfortable with the rubrics. A good collaboration is taking place in their facilitated groups. Teachers are individually reflecting on what they're doing, and we begin to, uh, identify some evidence of, of improving practice, if you're moving from one uh, column to the next column is, is on the rubric. Uh, pretty excited, finally, uh, the only problem we're having with our greenhouse is that automated controls are not working, the man, we manually can control that, so, uh, that's not as smooth as we want it to be. Uh, Mr. Warren's worked with our firewall and worked with the company, and it seems to be on the company's end. Uh, so we're gonna work through that particular piece, uh, but Mr. Miller, uh, starting second semester, uh, he's got some big plans for, for utilization of that greenhouse this spring, so all the things that we talked about, enthusiasm that we had around that greenhouse, and the ideas that he had not only for his classes, but for other, other student groups, uh, we're finally going to get a chance to, uh, to, to utilize that. And so a big thank you to, to all who contribute to get, getting into the point where we're at right now. Uh, we continue to, to work with Iowa Workforce Development, business sponsors, and our internal, not internal time, internal team, um, to get, uh, our registered welding program approved by the Department of Labor. Uh, we've been, we, we've sent some rough drafts to the Iowa Workforce Development, we continue to work. Uh, we've been, we, we've sent some rough drafts to the Iowa Workforce Development. We continue to work. Uh, through all that paperwork to make that happen. And hopefully by the end of the month, we'll get that approval, but we can retro back to the beginning of the, of this semester. Um, with that. Mr. Northwick talked about Sammy. Sammy stands for self-assessment for multi-tiered. S- systems of support. Uh, implementation process. Uh, it is a, the opportunity for a team of, of building, uh, members to. Uh, examine and reflect on current practices within, um, their, uh, buildings. Uh, and then also we were identified, uh, through the differentiated accountability system by the state. And we're identified in the area of the subgroup of special ed students. So, uh, based on this designation. Um, our, our middle school, our Schuler was designated by ESSA, but the high school and, and the, uh. Wa- Washington building also go through this process. Uh, each team will consist of administrator, math and reading teacher, special ed instructor, social emotional learning rep. And a teacher leader. So that's beginning, uh, this month. There's four different, uh, day workshops. And each building picked a specific day on different locations so that we wouldn't have, uh, too many, uh. Substitute teachers needed throughout the district. I modified the, the Gallup engagement survey to reflect feedback received from board members. As our goal was to, to give this survey annually, wanted to design it so that the information we receive. Uh, from, from staff can be measured year over year, at the same time be used to gather current reality information. Uh, to take actions and continuing this work for the district. But I'll meet with the DLT, not so much to modify the questions, but more about, oh, how they want that information. Uh, just, just, uh, disarrayed. So right now, we, we, we talked about buildings. We talked about different groups of employees. So. Really need to land on how we want to do that. We'll get district information. And then we'll also, uh, make sure, uh, following Wednesday to facilitate. Uh, all those folks to, to take that sort of thing. So we get good participation, uh, through, throughout our, our staff with that. Uh, one problem with Wednesday afternoon is, is the, the, the bus driver. So. We will have to mark it out, work out the time to make sure that they have the opportunity to, uh, take that as well. We are looking at registering for college career fairs to promote Atlantic schools, community and potential teachers to fill our vacancies. Uh, Mr. Robbins is working on it, on a communication guide that reflects Atlantic community. And also then also some of the strengths that, that, uh, Atlantic Community School has. Opportunity to meet face to face. Most of those career fairs are face to face. Couple of colleges, um. Have virtual. So, uh. We're not so sure h- how effective that will be, but we're looking at. Uh, Sioux Falls, we're looking at Iowa State, U N I, University of Iowa. Um, uh, Northwest Missouri State. Potentially UNO is, is all college fairs that we would attend. Um, it starts, uh, some of them start at the beginning of February and go through the middle of March. So, oh, working on. Organizing that and you've got to distribute. About one person, they're gonna go, go to each one of them. So I think we're, we're picking what groups are gonna go to that. Uh, we have a special guest coming, uh, to the Achievement Center next Tuesday at two thirty. Senator Yonier is gonna come visit the Achievement Center. We'll look at the alternative programs that exist in there and also talk a little bit about what we know with construction trades and some of the. Uh, visions that we have for our registered apprenticeship and, and other, uh, career, career opportunities. So if you're, uh, available at two thirty next Tuesday, you're sure welcome to, to join us. Uh, today, our playground committee went to, uh, uh, Guthrie Center. We had a recent game time playground system. Tomorrow, we will meet with Saturday Associates to provide input to the engineers as they work on designs and spec. Specs, uh, to go out for bid. The joy crew continues to meet regularly and identify, uh, things, uh, currently we're looking at trying to create one event, uh, per month. District wide. And, uh, big shout out to Landis Jeremiah Thompson, who, who made it pretty special. For basketball players and coaches to go watch Ryan Hawkins play in Des Moines. In the G League NBA, uh, they, they really went up above and beyond to make that happen. And I think it made it very special for. Those who chose that opportunity to go see, um. Ryan play basketball. District operation, get two new U, eight vacuums in Washington, part of the air quality. Phase two that, that we, we took out of the phase two because of, of cost restrictions. So those two units who were not working very properly, uh, have been replaced. And then we'll look this summer. To complete, uh, kind of what that was in, uh, unlike, uh, phase two, which is using Esther dollars. Uh, that air, air quality program would be. Um, used with Pepper and, uh, save and in as part of our, uh, capital project plan. Uh, we've gotten the, uh, area, about two thirds of the area. Uh, remember prior to, uh, the fire, when baseball and softball were using the, the backspace at the Achievement Center. Uh, we had those four by eights, uh, shelvings all the way on two sides. So that ate up a lot of square footage. Uh, we've removed, uh, four or five of the, um, temporary rooms. We've left three in there that were. Arteries using one and have some other things that were used for some storage at, at this time. We moved the batting cage, uh, out there. So there's two, actually two batting cages. And then there's a space where. Um, softball, uh, pitchers can pitch as well. So actually I think it's a, it's, it's designed a little bit better than it was previously. Um, and we've removed that one from Schuler. So that Schuler, uh. Times available when baseball was in there would be available for some other activities. As you know, uh, we have a lot of activities, a lot of, not only school activities, but other. People that utilize those gymnasiums for different a- activities. Um, and then our calendar committee has, has begun looking at next year's school calendar. Looking at, we added a couple of parents to the committee. And we're in the process of trying to give some options and then, uh, get some staff feedback, present to the board. In February and, and set the public hearing and, uh, an action on, for March. Uh, state, uh, we, the classification for football passed. And therefore, um, those in front of the state board, that's either today or tomorrow. It's coming up really soon. I can't remember the exact date. I can't imagine, uh, they'll deny that. So that will affect, uh. That'll go into that classification system for football. I think they want to really get that going and determining that if it passes because. Uh, everybody's kind of trying to wait, fill out football schedules. And they don't have the team. In the past, we've had those prior to this. Um, additional item. Last night, the governor outlined her priorities for the upcoming legislative session. As expected, her number one priority is to get some type of educational savings account passed. Uh, she did indicate a number which is, uh, SSA, uh, would be at two point five percent. Based upon the number of seven thousand five ninety-eight that she used in her speech last night. Uh, then she also, uh, you know, she's gonna be pretty assertive. To, to, to see if that, it, to, to get that passed. Uh, besides that, looking, uh, for, creates flexibility in categorical funding. And, um, and maybe look at some of the current requirements in, in chapter twelve or code requirements. Uh, she really, uh, and, and rightfully so. Uh, the future ready Iowa, the work-based learning experience register fellowship, including the teacher para one, um, has, has, um. Grown, uh, a lot over the last few years. So that, uh, something she noted as well. Uh, the, uh, bill was submitted today as HSB one. Uh, the educational savings account. Uh, I think it's, uh, that's, we, would be referred to as Student First Act. Um, so, uh, has some things in there if you're interested in kind of looking at. What, uh, she, she reposes in, in that ESA, uh. Bill.
Does the board have any questions from the superintendent about these issues? I'll move on to board report. I, I can share that I'm going to be attending on January twenty seventh, the twenty eighth, a communications three sixty workshop. Uh, to give me a strong foundation in communication strategy, media relations and messaging. To use for student success advocacy. It says it's gonna be intensive.
Sounds like it.
I know. So, yeah, they kind of like sucked me in by saying, hey, I S B will pay for you to go to this cool workshop. And I was like, yeah, learning, cool. And then they're like, oh, by the way, now you're an ambassador.
I will be there with you. Um, I have something to share and I guess it's just, uh, kind of a, an observation. It, it looks fun to see how things we approve or. Pay for, get utilized. And so our technology, all our big TVs like that, uh, this is not the first year, but. Uh, if you were at the Roland Dyer wrestling tournament, you saw seven of those. Being utilized there. And I just think it's kind of cool. They have one setup for each mat. And as opposed to in the past where you would just have the timer and see the score, you can actually see. The name of the kid that's wrestling, who's wrestling, what schools they're from. It's very visible for the crowd to see. And so in addition to those four television setup, there's one on each side of the gym that has upcoming belts. And then also one in the comments area that lets. People watch what's happening in the gym from the comments area. So I think that's just a shout out to Roger. And I would also say they, you know, they had some issues with some of the, they did with some of the technology going on in the gym. Turns out it's a tracks wrestling problem and not a problem on our end. But we had Roger there. Doing his magic. And I just think it, it's kind of a cool thing that we have in Atlantic United Technology that she lies. To run a wrestling tournament. It's pretty incredible. So.
And we got a lot of positive feedback and we had seventeen teams here on Saturday. Quality teams. I think the only reason they come is because of some jumbo suit that. Now, I, I think people are, come to Atlantic in a Roland Dyer tournament because it's a pretty competitive. Uh, tournament. And if you went into Roland Dyer, you, uh, had a full day of wrestling.
Yeah.
Well, I was invited to. Present a, a class, uh, Eric Miller and, uh, Guy Summers invited me to teach. One morning last month and I'd never done that before. And so. I got done four classes and I was exhausted. Had to go home and take a nap. And, uh, my retired teacher wife said. I, so now you believe me, uh, from all the years that I've taught, now exhausting it was. And I said, yeah. Have gained a great appreciation for teachers and, and, uh. The kids, of course, were behaving themselves. I didn't have any discipline problems. And, uh, but it was fun for me and hopefully the kids learned a few things.
Are you giving them all your tips and tricks?
I was, the topic was how to be successful in life. And, uh. It was. You know, it was. It allowed me to expound and, uh, they were gracious enough to listen to. It was fun.
I would just, uh, real quick, the sideline chairs are here and I think they look sweet in the gym. They had them last night and they used them at the wrestling, uh. Wrestling meeting this past weekend. Actually, both of them, the little kids on Sunday too. So. They, uh, they look really nice with the new gym floor and, uh, all that. It looks, uh, looks sharp. So now we just need them to use them because the pads are like. Their heart, their hearties are rock, but they look nice and they, they, they look really nice. So that was a good deal.
All right. Financial reports.
Yeah, I'm sure it did add the Esther ones, uh. Mainly because she just wanted to review kind of where, where the balances. So if you have any questions on that, that's fine. There really is anything out of ordinary that we point out with the exception of. Um, we did receive our income surtax. You look at the secretary's report, which is page.
Looks like page seven.
Yep, I would agree with you. So if you look on the, the two lines, general fund and PEPAL. So, um, we are at twelve percent. Uh, eight percent in our structural. Support levy and then also four percent in our, in our PEPAL fund. So we receive that for. Is that from last year, Sarah? Based off of last year's. Any other questions?
So the Esther dollars.
We, we have. Well, two, two things. We have approximately fifty nine thousand left. And that's not committed in the, the, like, the, the monies we use for air quality and, and different salaries. Uh, we do have, uh, we have two summers to spend approximately four hundred and some thousand for our children's summer experience. So will we spend all those dollars? Maybe, maybe not. I think so, but. But we'll have enough to fund that for, for the next two years.
So that's, um, summer twenty-three and twenty-four.
Yeah, that's, you know, lost learning. Great money. And you had to spend twenty percent of, of, of the dollars that you received.
And do we have our sort of plans in the works for that already?
So we have Esther one, two and three. So.
All you got left is Esther three.
All we got left with this. And that's the four hundred thousand, is that?
Well, there's four, no, there's more than that in the balance. Uh, but we have some of that committed. Or select our phase two is, I can't remember how much it is, but we've only paid a portion of that. So. Uh, that'll, but it's committed to a certain amount. Um, and then we've also committed to, to a couple of salary positions that we're using those dollars for. Uh, we've committed to, uh, some, some other things. So. Take, take those commitments out. We have approximately fifty nine thousand dollars. And I think just like today, we needed some, um. We needed some, uh, CPR bottles and that would, that would fit underneath those expenditures. So. Um, we have an opportunity to, to, to use some of those dollars we use.
Nick, if you look at the last page of that as a report down at the bottom. It shows you what remaining funds we have and then what we have budgeted in fiscal year twenty-three and twenty-four. So then there at the bottom, there's available times. That's what we still have. Left that we can do something with. The eighty-nine. It's, it's part of it's the earning loss too.
Majority of that's not designated as, as earning loss, balance.
Wait, a majority of it is designated for that.
No, the majority that's available to us is, is in that twenty percent, four hundred and two thousand, four hundred and some thousand.
Any other questions?
I would move that we approve the financial reports. Williams, yes.
Yeah.
Phillip, yes.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes. Okay. So for our discussion, I know tonight, um, I just wanted to talk a little bit with the board about board development. Um, it seems like at the January, this is probably a good time for us to check in about some of the things that we talked about as a board. Um, ways that we wanted to improve our, I mean, I think this is a pretty high performing board probably. Um, everybody, we have pretty good tenure and, uh, pretty good engagement. But. Hopefully, everybody wants to keep on learning. So I was interested. hopefully, everybody wants to keep on learning. So I was interested in finding out if the board has, I'm sorry, did you have anything you were going to say about this? Well, we talked about adding this item and then we didn't really talk about it again. But I'm interested in knowing if, one thing I was thinking about was just in terms of, of education about the district. If there are things that we as a board feel like we would like to know more about this aspect of of the school district, I mean, you know, anything about it. If there's things that, that we feel like would improve our performance or if there's things about being board members that, you know, we would like to, like to learn more about. And then I remember we specifically had talked about wanting to do more with advocacy. And there's going to be a huge push from ISB this year because of course with the, the voucher, yes, ESA, is that what it's called, ESA? At the legislature and I, I'm not sure there's really going to be much we can, we can do about that not happening. But there, there are going to be some sort of aspects to sort of think about how that's going to, how that might affect us, our district and you know, whether there's ways that we can influence that process. So I'm open to hearing board thoughts about any of that.
I wonder if it would be a good idea, like to, you know, we have our super board meeting or something, and I don't know if the governor would be willing to do this because I'm sure she's not going to want to hear from all of us who are opposed to it, but inviting her here with some other districts, just to kind of share our story. The way I understand it is that, that this push that she's getting is from Des Moines Public. That, I mean, that's how it's been explained to me by, it was one of our Toms, one of her representatives. But I, I think it's important for her to get out into the rural areas. So, I mean, I don't know if she would come, but it would, it'd be kind of nice to maybe just set something up and invite her here, you know, do a tour, show her what we're doing with the with, you know, with our different educational opportunities when it comes to career and development because she is highly interested in that. It's just an idea. Sometimes it's better to meet face to face and actually have them come and see than a letter. And I thought Steve did a really good job with the email back to us from the emails from ISB because both of our, our legislators are not on board, you know, they have said that many times. So I don't feel like, you know, that was good for you to say, I've had this conversation, you know, so we are individually letting them, but we need to go up higher.
And I think what you're saying is inviting, what, what's her response? She, she can say no.
Exactly. It doesn't hurt to send an invitation. And I'm sure there's other districts, you know, or, you know, maybe we just want it to be Atlantic. I don't know. But
I think if you could, if that's something she would entertain, I think if you do that, I think you'd probably get representative several district, districts that would go, would be at least be, I don't know how you would set it up, but at least they would have. If Clarendon did it, I would think Atlantic would want a representative there, you know, or vice versa, you know, as far as that, I don't know if that.
Right. Well, I feel like it's important for us rural districts to speak out loudly because from what I hear, Des Moines Public must somehow has a lot of pull and has really, whatever's happening has influenced her to really go for this hard and.
We are in the process as a superintendent group of A A, we're inviting all of the legislators to a meeting. We did it last year for the legislation. Now we're looking at trying to get give them where we have eight or ten superintendents meeting with, whether it's Brett Seacrest from towns of loves or Tom, Tom, or whoever it might be. Now, we're pretty widespread. So not all superintendents go to, to all those particular ones, but we're gonna, we've invited them and most of your legislation, legislators, your representative, your senators, they want to, they want to engage in the conversation with superintendents, board members as, as, you know, when we went to that super board meeting, remember what they were there. They want to be there.
I'm agreeing with this.
So they want to hear from, from their constituents and, and that's, that's the way we're going to try to do that. Maybe that's something we bring up. How do we, how do we get that message to the governor's office?
Yeah, that's just the part I was wondering about because it does feel like our congressional representatives have not supported it, but I'm not sure who all she's listening to. I guess you're saying it seems like maybe from the urban districts, that's where there's, there's being.
Well, that's just that because the thought is that she wants or the, the support is for the specific different schools, right? I mean, Des Moines Public has the, they have their own culinary school and their own, you know, I think that's, you know, I think that's the branching out of the whatever, non-traditional part of it, not necessarily, you know, the Carol Kippers, the St. Albers, you know, that's what we think of in our, because that's, that's what we have around here. We don't have to.
I think I take two or three things with the essays, I think, is that, you know, the history of these states that have went down this road, it starts with just this and the fear is that once, once you have it in place, it's just a matter of growing, growing that area. The second, I think the adversarial topic is do we use public dollars for private education? And in regards to that, more about do they have the same requirements that we have as public schools? And I think if I skim through HSP one and it doesn't appear that the requirement part for private schools are in there. Kind of like no additional private, no additional requirements from there. So I think a couple of the, the big issues that created controversy at state capital last year still exists within this current bill. Now, obviously, it's a process thing, but they're going to push this pretty fast and pretty quick, the way, way it sounds to me.
So could you elaborate? What do you mean about no additional requirements?
So for example, your private schools, if they don't want to take a kid, they don't have to take it. Or if we have to take these tests and they, they, they're, they're not held in the same standards as, as public school institutions are. So that, that's always been the rub. And I think the other rub with that, because I was up in Northwest Iowa with Unity and Western Christian and, and so, so some of those private schools, the public school and the private school seems to have, they seem to have a great relationship where they share the text, the transportation costs and partner in professional development and, and all of those things. And that's been created over time. So this idea that the private, the private sector, private schools are mad at the public schools, I think, is, I think you have to be hard, hardfetched to find, find that where those relationships are pretty good within the communities of where they, they exist.
This is, I mean, I haven't studied this issue at all. Is it the governor thinking that kids need school choice? Is that what they are pushing? So that if a student thinks that public school is no good, that give him a chance to go to another school or what is the deal?
Yeah, you know, she, she, she stated a specific example of a, especially a teacher last night who had two daughters. One flourished in public school. The other one had trouble. They chose, they had the resources to choose to take her to private school. She blossomed. She's a doctor at this particular time. So that was the example that they use. But I think what she's saying is that a public school, whether it's Atlantic, CAM, Griswold, V H K, cannot meet the needs of all of, of the kids, I think, is, is kind of what she's implying with that. Because on the, on the other side of the coin, we're saying the school choice is there. You can choose to homeschool. We got a homeschool assistance program. That's an opportunity to connect to that. So where parents don't have to, to, to go out and spend money on getting a curriculum or getting a teacher hired for homeschool to do that. You know, you got to open roll in and out. Now it's, it's a free for all. You can do it tomorrow if you want to. So if you're having, so that would be, that would, in my mind, those are the, the, the two sides of the coin.
Is it, I guess I'll have to read it too. But last year, I know that there was only a there was going to be like a percentage or a cap on it and only like what so many special ed kids, so many
and the, and the poverty levels still in there. I don't clearly understand it. So I don't want to give you a specific, but I think it's like three hundred percent below the the poverty level. I saw that number in there. How, how that's represented and who is able to do it or not. I really don't understand yet, Jenny.
In her speech, she just referenced that priority would be given to those with financial needs first as they're rolling out the funding. But she stated in the proposal, there was like a three year period that by the end of three years, it should be fully implemented.
Those, right, those people that currently are attending private school would be, have access to.
To the ESA, where they initially, initially it would be to those with financial needs.
First one would be just kind of earners.
Okay, so something for, for us to watch as individuals. Are there actions that we want to take at the board then regarding that? Think about it.
February fourteenth is the day on the hill. We meet at the technical center. And then we, we meet with a couple of people from Iowa School Board. I usually have a representative or senator come to that. And then at noon, we, we take off to the Capitol. Last year, Lauren and Christie went and we had an opportunity to talk to, to all, all our representatives out there. So that I think was well received. Then say Lauren and Christie are, are getting educated in student, what you call student success, communication or something else.
Communication, PR, media relations. For advocacy.
I do want to say something and this is kudos to the board. I talked to Luann today, just kind of get better understanding of, of the experience that, that these two will be a part of. And, and she said, you know, I, I'm working with two schools that their comment is I want to be more like Atlantic in regards to attending our strategic plan ceremony there. So the, the work that we're doing with our strategic plan is to write work and, and best practice out there. And there's there's others that are trying to replicate the work that this board has done. So congratulations.
Yeah, let's make sure and keep on keeping our focus on that and trying to follow it. All right. Well, board members, I know I kind of was just sort of springing this on you, but if you do have thoughts of things that you'd like us to be learning more about, to sort of help us develop either as board members or in terms of our leadership of the district. Like I definitely do want to hear about those ideas when we move forward. And if everybody's ready, we can move on to the consent agenda.
It's a couple fundraiser on there. And they're more of events more than fundraisers, kind of invite, invite students to serve. I think the other one is a lot of all a tournament. Launch to that. So not going out associating sales over that. I know Mr. Mr. Hunt was a little concerned about sixteen hundred dollars worth of pickle herring in one of the bales. So I said, well, I bought one of the tubs. It's, it's pretty good. My, my, my wife likes that stuff. So other than that, as Stacy alluded to, this is Gropman has submitted her letter of resignation, retirement letter. She's been a, a part of our school district for thirty two years. That's a long time and, and a lot, a lot of opportunities to make a difference in kids' lives. And she's passionate about that. And she noted in her resignation letter, it's time for her to try something different. And, and we want to thank her and congratulate her to getting to the retirement age and wish her only the best.
I move, we approve the consent, Magin, for consent items.
Sorry, yeah.
Williams, yeah.
Yeah.
McLean, yes. Tell it, yeah.
Great action items. The first one is resolution for consider participation in the instructional support levy and set the public hearing.
So you won't be able to set the public hearing until you decide what you're doing with the February board meeting. We were supposed to have the public hearing on February eighth, and I thought we were potentially going to do that.
So we would have to do it more in March.
Well, I don't, when are we going to have our February regular board meeting?
Well, the question about the regular board meeting in February is Mr. Miller has district contests here as starts at four. He wants folks around this table to be judges for some of those events. And he had requested we can move from five thirty to six tonight.
Oh, so.
You mean just the start time?
Yeah.
And what date is that? February eighth?
February eighth.
I will not be here that.
It will be.
At all.
And Nick, you indicated that you won't be here either. So we can, we, we, we wouldn't want to have a public hearing now if the two members were gone. So we probably need to set it for that March date. You're going to be in March, gone in March.
Well, I guess we have just a special hearing or board meeting.
We can't, we, we just have to advertise, we just have to advertise the public hearing as to when it's going to be. And it has to be advertised, what, ten to twenty days, correct, Sarah?
You could do it before the work. I was thinking with the one work session, yeah, in February, in February. The twenty February twenty second.
Yep, that sounds like a plan. Twenty second, what day is that? Wednesday. I think that's when I get back from San Antonio. So that'd be good.
This is in February.
You don't need me to do that. So I moved to.
We have a little session about you.
Probably back, I'm probably tired of them. Well, before I make a motion to make it then, are we going to have our work, our work session then? Nick, we're flying back on Tuesday.
Well, I'd be inclined for us to have it the twenty second if you can be here. I think if you're getting back that day, I'm not sure. I'd want to try to do that.
I'll, I'll be back unless we have flight problems.
I'm just gonna say, don't, don't think that you're not going to have flights.
Anything can happen. Well, I'm not, I'll do it. I'll just see what happens. We won't know until the twenty second anyway. If your flight gets delayed, you won't. But you, but you, but you can take action on February. You can have the public hearing because it's just inviting public to, to have.
We could do that. And if for some reason you would not be here, we just.
We would have work session. So all you're doing is inviting the public to give comment. So if I'm not here, that's not the end of the world.
I'll move to approve the resolution to consider participation in the instructional levy and set the public hearing for February twenty second at five? If I read it, if I, if our meeting is at five thirty, five thirty, five thirty.
Helen, yes. McLean, yes. Yes.
Yes. Yeah.
The resolution for public purpose expenditures.
So initially, the, the board gave a jury crew some, some dollars for that. Well, I ensure those dollars committed in July or June was to go to, to feed, feed everyone at the Orange Frog Training. So we do have some donated dollars still available to us. As we continue to look at activities, Joy, Joy Crew would like access to a few more dollars. So we're, we're recommending an additional ability to, to spend. Uh, so we're, we're recommending an additional ability to, to spend three thousand more dollars.
The move that we spend the three thousand.
One second. Williams, yes, huh?
Yeah.
Clarence?
Yep.
Tell it, yeah, McLean, yes.
Okay, uh, action item C, driver's ed contract.
I was informed in writing that White Knuckle Driving could not fulfill other contract that was awarded to him in November. Um, I did talk to the other, uh, company that put in a bid for our driver of educational needs, Deluxe Driving. I'm Carol and, uh, Gary indicated that he would honor his bid. Uh, it's listed in there, so I'm recommending a, a two-year contract beginning January eleventh. Uh, twenty twenty-three to December twenty twenty-four. Uh, you'll notice, uh, in the contract, uh, his contract says December twenty twenty-two. That's not corrected, but the contract if approved. Uh, Sarah has made that change to represent the two-year contract through December thirty-first, twenty, oh, twenty-four.
And this is a new company that we've not worked with before?
Deluxe, uh, driving had did our, uh, drivers ed, uh, needs, uh, approximately five years ago. Uh, then White Knuckle took over at that particular time. Four or five years.
Is there a concern when doing it on the calendar year versus the school year? Uh, I'm just wondering if it shouldn't either be like for a year and a half or for two and a half years to get us back on a school year cycle or?
We, we, we could, we could do that, uh, given, given when we, we switched from Deluxe Driving to White Knuckle, it was a January, a January.
That's why there is.
Right, that's why it's.
I would move that we approve the Deluxe Driving Academy two-year contract. McLean, yes, Williams, yes, huh?
Yeah.
Tell it, yeah, McLaren.
Yep.
Action item D, uh, has to do coaching contracts for the fall twenty twenty-three season.
As we do, as Mr. Miller, uh, Mr. Mitchell does each time they, uh, get, get done with the evaluation process, he submits to the board. A seasonal coaching positions and sponsor positions and he submitted to ball twenty twenty-three coaching contracts and. I'm recommending that you approve the list as presented.
I move we accept the recommendation for coaches.
McLaren?
Yep.
McLean, yes, Helen, yes, Williams, yes, huh?
Yes.
Action item E, uh, February eighth, twenty twenty-three, being designated a school counselor appreciation day.
That includes not only our guidance counselors, but also our mental health professionals. We recommend that we designate that day to, to recognize, uh, uh, that those two groups and. Show our appreciation towards the work that they do each day.
Then I have a parade. Raise them up on our shoulders.
Seems like we don't do parades, but sometimes do.
I move we declare the school pre, school counselor appreciation day, uh, February eighth.
Hut?
Yeah.
Helen, yes, McLaren.
Yep.
McLean, yes.
Action item, uh, SBRC Modified Allowable Growth, uh, for at-risk and dropout prevention.
So these dollars, uh, is at the maximum five percent, uh, if you remember last year. Uh, the Iowa School Board, there are some schools out there, they don't have the ability to do that. Uh, when the year was trans, tr, trans, the transition into the new law. Uh, Atlantic was already spending five percent for dropout prevention, so. Uh, a lot of the funds that, uh, you would be approving, uh, go to provide alternative, uh. Our, our alternative program at the high school. But we also have sports, uh, in, in Washington, Schuler and the middle school as well. That are, are designated to, uh, prevent dropout throughout that. Throughout their experiences in, uh, public education, so. I would approve, I would recommend that you approve, uh, SBRC allowable grow that risk dropout prevention application. Uh, five hundred nineteen thousand, six hundred fourteen dollars.
Also. Helen, yes, McLaren.
Yes.
McLean, yes, William, yes, huh?
Yeah.
Hey, action item G is for an architect and engineer contract for the high school storage shed.
So last month, uh, we had this as an action item table, uh, or requesting we get some more information in regards to. Our industrial tech program, is that something they're capable of doing? Uh, examine our current storage situation. Uh, and, and, and then also, uh, see if it's possible. If we are going to build a shed to make sure that we utilize the space in which we locate that. So as you can see from background, uh, information, uh, this high school has many, uh, storage spaces. The unfortunate part about it, they're small in nature and, and sometimes not as useful. I think two of the things that we hear in, in, in the high school that we really recognize the need. Uh, that really is taking up a lot of that storage space is our, uh, graduation stage chairs. Which takes up a lot of square footage, uh, within a, within a classroom actually. And then the amount of equipment, especially the new risers at, at the, uh, in music department. We've been dinged by the fire marshal a couple of times in regards to having those in the hallway in, in the way of the exit. Uh, and by putting them in, into the auditorium, uh, it really limits anything else, so. Uh, can we use our spaces a little bit better? Yes, and we, we can do those things, uh, can we? Mr. Weiss has kind of taken and put our vehicles in the bus parts, a lot of the space that we had out there. It's kind of used to do that, now that's a convenience in the fact that if you're gonna take a vehicle, you can get a warm car or a warm bus and. And do those types of things, um, if you ask Mr. Smith if we need. Our head custodian here at the high school, if we need additional storage, the answer is yes. Um, and you know, some of the things that we talked about, uh, as far as the facility project did, what are some things outside? That are sitting out there in the winter, um, that is part of our new facility project, so. That's the information, uh, that. I gathered over the time, talking to Mr. Dotson, uh, he, uh. He thinks it's more doable to do the, uh. Destruction and direction of the, the new roof and siding of our old greenhouse and repurpose that. Pour up, pour a floor in the concrete in, in there, uh, brand the walls, break windows. Put maybe some electric outlets in there, so, uh, those kids would be exposed to, to, um, those types of skills. And then also, uh, have, have the drafting class have the opportunity, uh, to, to, to determine what materials they need. A costing thing. So I think so, it's a great opportunity, uh, at, at that scope to get that, to get that completed. He, he indicated that trying to get a, a storage shed done similar to kind of the greenhouse situation, it may be. Two years down the road and he, he wasn't sure that. That, that would fit in his wheelhouse, so that's the, the information I gathered, uh, from last meeting, so.
What is the mission for that schools?
The, the.
The old greenhouse.
The old, yeah, well, uh, initially it, it's gonna be, it's probably gonna be for storage, but we also. Are looking to add, and Heather, help me out, get, is it gas welders, a couple of gas welders that we need to do for our.
Yeah, that's typical welder.
So i- is that, is that a space to put a couple welders in there to, to alleviate some of the. The space constrictions in our, in our area back there. So, that's, that's.
That would require some extra ventilation and things, if that's what you're gonna.
It, it probably would, I, you know, we'll probably have to put two twenties in there, I think there's only one tens at this particular time.
I'm not sure if those questions.
So the o, the other thing in regards to that, now we're on, not initially as we get moving. Uh, that, that Bay Area and Achievement Center is validated for, we, we, we have ventilation that we put in there, we had our STEM best grant. In regards to that too, so. My, based, that, that's the information I have in regards to the storage shed. Do we absolutely need the storage? I, I guess I can't say with a hundred percent certainty that we do, would it, would it come in handy? Uh, absolutely.
Oh, but my thought, and I know that it doesn't matter as far as the contract, but like, I just, thirty-five by fifty isn't very big.
That's not.
I mean, I just took, when we built our garage, it's twenty-four by twenty-four is a standard two-car garage and we built it six foot deeper. Well, this building here is only twice the size of my garage, that I don't have a huge garage, I'm just saying. I know that doesn't matter here, but if we're gonna build it, cause if you think, how many hurdles did we get? Hundred, hundred, I don't know, how many hurdles do you get?
Uh, yeah, you'd ask.
You got eight lanes, you got the eight lanes, the four hundred hurdles, probably has ten hurdles, there's. Say a hundred hurdles, you'd fill, you'd fill half of that with hurdles, unless you kill some kind of hanging system or something like that, but. I just, and I know that's a conversation we'll have later, but I just, that's what it just says in there.
I think you never build the shed big enough. In space.
That's what I don't.
How big can you go?
Yeah, I, I would guess another six feet, uh, he said you can make it bigger. Uh, and he indicated the cost, probably, I mean, you're adding. Please, there's not, I mean, you're as expensive as, you know, scratch, so. You know, we would make it as big as we possibly can, given the fact that there's a water line running through there and then another.
Say build it big, yeah, that's not it.
With a big door.
Yeah, we, we would put the, we would put the big door on the, on the front side of it. Um, and I, I think the, the location provides us a, a easy. Us to come right off of that parking lot and not really disrupt more than, than the area that's right there, so. If, if, if we think that storage is something that we need, uh, I don't know where a, a better location, better location to have in, in building. Cause you, you don't have to go much further to the south than you're going, and you're going up an incline. And you'd even, you'd wanna put, put it there as well.
Well, that's. That's what we're asking them to do, but fifteen thousand dollars we're gonna pay them, it's. Figure out where's the best, you know, at that size.
I think the other restriction, and, and I don't think it's an issue, but you know, your, your cost location and obviously. We have three local businesses that put up, um, steel sheds in our community. Uh, we go over a certain a hundred ninety-one thousand, which I don't anticipate. But, uh, if it's, if it comes in higher than that, we kind of have to modify it, otherwise we have to open up for public bidding. Which I prefer not to.
Well, I appreciate you. Going the extra mile and checking out all that storage and what.
Yeah, I think it's something that we really. How, how do we use the limited space we have in this building? In more efficient way, and, and we can do that, and we, we, meaning Mr. Mitchell. Mr. Smith and, and everybody that toured it, we recognize that, you know, we can utilize this space a little bit better. Uh, but at the same time, I think there's a need, I, I, I need for those, like, like I referred to, that graduation stage. You know, if we're only gonna use it once a year, but it's, it's, it's consuming, you know, hundred square feet of our storage, I mean, that. That, or we have to move it out of there because Mr. McKay needs it to, to create a classroom like we did when the COVID was around, so. Um, and when we did, obviously, we had more variables there, but we. We rented a storage shed that stored a lot of that extra furniture and stuff in there as well, so. Uh, we weren't able to, during that time, we weren't able to hold all, all of our materials, sorry.
Uh, and I guess to that, if I, I, I guess it would like us to. Put some thought into or, or really look at that extra space. With your greenhouse in terms of what, what it could be used for, if there is. Other means in the building, um, especially if you have plans to do something else with your friends to program out, you know, just. It's an opportunity for space that maybe there's some, some means or desires for. Student workroom lounge, something, but. And I know it's kind of a little bit external to the building, so it's kind of. Yeah, before, before we, we frame it out in a certain way.
I move, do we approve the, uh, architect engineer contract to Snyder Associates for the high school storage shed?
I'll second. McLaren?
Yes.
Williams, yes, huh?
Yeah.
McLean, yes, Helen, yes.
Okay, our last action item is payout for the high school air quality contract.
And this is that phase two in the S R dollars, though we were, train submitted an amount for nineteen thousand, four hundred thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
And just to clarify, is this payoff number one, cause it also says payoff number three later on the.
That's number one, that's number one, okay, great.
And move we pay. The bill.
A second. McLean, yes, Williams, yes, McLaren.
Yep.
Helen, yes, huh?
Yeah.
Upcoming dates. Board will have a work session on January twenty-fifth at five thirty, people be there?
Yes.
Uh, regular board meeting for February eighth, oh, that was the PBD that we've got.
Are we gonna have that, so that, I'm sorry, are we still having that? At six thirty? For the three people that can be here?
It's okay with me.
At five thirty, I thought we were doing six thirty for F of day.
Yeah. That was the, that was the issue, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm, I'm on vacation, so. I'm checked out of that day. Okay. Uh, and then February fourteenth is the day on the hill, um, so opportunity to meet with congressional representatives and. Get some, some training and discussion about advocacy action and, uh, legislation that affects school districts.
Excuse me. Yeah, just let me know. So I apologize, I'm the advocate that I cannot make that. I've got my insurance guy.
It's Valentine.
I know, well, and that's my first day back over, my insurance guy is gonna be there.
All right, and I have a motion to return. I move we turn. Fantastic, thank you, principal, thank you so much.